Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission. Oh, I've got feedback. What was that? Okay, welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of January 14. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Wagstaff here, Commissioner Campbell here, Commissioner Hall and Chair Chalmers.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent this evening. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. So we have a number of matters on the agenda tonight, but before we dive into that, do we have any matters that are not on the agenda that anyone in the public would like to raise? Not seeing anything? And what's the status on Zoom?
And if you're on Zoom and you'd like to give a public comment, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Great, thank you very much. Can we please have the planning directors report?
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. I'm unable to attend tonight due to illness, but I'm going to be listening in. And I have nothing to report except that we're going to be bidding farewell tonight to someone who's left the lasting impression on our team and our community, Jackie O'Neil. Jackie's taking on an exciting new role as a senior planner for the city of St. Helena, and it's a wonderful opportunity for her to advance her planning career. And while we're thrilled for her, we're also certainly going to miss her here in Larkspur. We're going to reserve some time at the end of the meeting during the planning commissioner reports to thank her for her work for the city of Larkspur, and I hope she'll stay until then. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Elise, and we'll come back to Jackie. Right, so the first item on the public hearing agenda tonight is 74 Madrone Avenue, PLN 24048. If we could please have the staff report.
Yes, let me just share my screen here. Okay, good evening commissioners. The item before you is PLN 24-048 for 74 Madrone Avenue. For a bit of context here, there's an overhead shot of the property on the left highlighted in yellow, and on the right is the Google Street View of the property. The project seeks to legalize an existing rear accessory structure. It's approximately 176 square feet. Because of the size of the property, it's already over the floor area, the allowed floor area, and there was no permit for that accessory structure. So tonight we're here to legalize the existing floor area of the lot. And as required by the municipal code, anytime there's an entitlement requested, design review is also tacked on, even if it's not necessarily required outright. So if approved, there would be no material change to the property. It would just exist as it does today. So on the right here, I've included a site plan with the structure highlighted in this darker gray color. And then the elevations of it are included on the left and in the center. And then here are the floor plans for both the main residence, which is in the middle and on the right, and the accessory structure on the left. And as noted in the staff report, I think the lower level, it's kind of hard to see at the scale, but from about where this cursor is towards the rear of the building, that is all more than 50% below grade and doesn't count towards the floor area, which is why there's some different numbers in the staff report. So on that point, the project is requesting to legalize the existing floor area ratio of 0.42, where the code would only allow 0.25 due to the slope of the lot. In the attached FAR study, you can see that the average floor area ratio is 0.3 in the neighborhood. The existing conditions, oh, this is the wrong floor area table on here, but it would be, I believe, the eighth largest floor area in the in the neighborhood as it stands. There's been no public comment letters received on this item. And staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a class one and a class three sequel exemption. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the architect and owner are here as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay, could we hear from the applicant or his architect?
Hello, good evening. Stuart Summers, the architect, and this is Brady Binstadt, the owner of the property. And thank you for your time. I know you're volunteers. I'm a commissioner in an adjacent town here, so I'm going to get out of your way so you can get onto the bigger items tonight. So I was hired by Brady actually to do an interior alteration of his lower level, and he just purchased the property. So as soon as he closed, I got in there. So much to our surprise, we got a notice and found out about this structure. We got a notice from the town. So it wasn't exactly disclosed that this was an unpermitted structure and all this other stuff. So we're dealing with it now and want to make it right. It's hard to tell how old it is. It probably looks 40, 40, 45 years old, just looking at the construction. So we simply would like to maintain and legalize this structure and on the heels of it, deal with, you know, your building department to make sure it's up to code. So that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Do you have any questions for the applicant? Is the accessory structure what you can see from Onyx? If you stand at Onyx and there's that blue house on the corner, and it's got the windows.
I don't think it's visible from anywhere. I, but you might know.
You can't see it from Onyx? Okay, so I wasn't, I was looking at the wrong thing there. Is it set above your house? Yeah, I wonder if that is. Is this it? Is that it there? If you don't mind approaching, yeah, please come up. Is that it there? Yeah, that is it, isn't it? Yeah?
I guess I need to walk on Onyx more.
Okay, that's what I was.
I think you, yes, you can see it from Onyx.
Okay.
We've never looked at it from that management point.
Yeah, I know. Well, it looks, it looked like your design, so I assume that's, I assume that's what. That was my only question, is what I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing.
We'll go walk up there tomorrow for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you planning to like remodel this, this?
There's no intention at this time to do anything except just maintain it as is.
What is it currently used for? Okay.
He's got a teenage son, so you can send him up there.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to provide a public comment, please raise your hand.
I guess I got a clarification for probably for staff.
Sure, like there are no hands on Zoom. Sorry to close that loop.
The, the, the building department was planning to work with the applicant to do code inspections and that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Part of the, one of the conditions of approval includes, includes getting all of the necessary permits from the building department.
Okay.
Thank you for that. In that case, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Wagstaff.
I couldn't see it because I didn't go on Onyx, but.
There you go, here's a picture.
Yeah, I think it's fine to legalize it, so I don't have any problem with it.
Great, thank you. We'll just go down the line.
Yeah, agreed. We, I think we say this every meeting, but on the sloping lots, the floor area ratio is something that we're working on, so.
Yes, and it's actually good to repeat it for, to have it in minutes, I think. Commissioner Hall?
I agree with Liam and Bragg. I think it's fine.
No issues?
Yep.
Yeah, so just to say it legally, I think, given the unique circumstances of this property and the slope and FAR for compatibility and design, I can also make the findings. So I think this, I think we can just take this to a vote.
Okay.
No, wait, we need a motion first. I always get this backwards.
I'll move to approve PLN 24D, whatever that is.
048.
Yeah, 048. To legalize the 176 square foot accessory structure.
Subject to compliance with the conditions, right, with the building department.
Subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a sequel exemptions, et cetera.
Yeah, I think they have a number of conditions they have to bring into compliance. Yeah. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Chair Chalmers?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four eyes, zero no's, and one absence.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're moving on to 56 Diane Lane. PLN 24-15, if we could please have the staff report. Oh. Yeah, we have a commissioner who is within the vicinity, so you you, I think you can, my understanding is you can sit in the audience.
At least that I could sit in the audience.
And be a member of the public.
But when you make the decision, I have to leave the room.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So this evening I am presenting PLN 2415. This is design review, heritage tree removal request, and fence height exception request for 56 Diane Lane. Here we have the aerial site map. Sorry, I'm trying to make this go away to. I think we're just going to have to deal with it. Okay, I've got the aerial site map here on the left. You can see the subject site outlined in yellow. This is one of the largest, this is the largest site in the Heather Gardens neighborhood at 11,012 square feet. And we have the existing street view on the right. The project description, the applicants are proposing a complete demolition of the existing one-story 1,454 square foot, single-family residence that does not have a garage and all of the associated existing accessory structures on the site. And construction of a new two-story, 4,556 square foot, single-family residence, including the attached two-car garage. Currently, I think I'm going to go back just to the current, current home. So the current home is presently 15 feet from the front property line. That's common. We see that with a lot of the Heather Gardens neighborhood, original construction homes. It does not have adequate covered parking, does feature the small roof eaves that are also with the immediate gabled roofs, very similar for the original construction of the neighborhood. It was evaluated for historic significance by Jerry Holon and was not found to be of any historic significance. And the only other background for this that's relevant to the project is that there was a previously approved lot line adjustment where 515 square feet was abandoned to the neighbor to the south. So for the new residents, we, the applicants are requesting design review, which is required for all new two-story residences. Heritage tree removal, which we'll come back to later, and then a fence height exception permit to allow a seven-foot fence with an additional one foot of lattice around the side and rear property lines. And so here's the site plan. You can see that this is a different style house than what we've seen for the pattern of development in Heather Gardens. It has a courtyard design with what is referred to in the staff report as like wings that are developed along the side property lines. The proposed residence meets the required setbacks. It meets the 20-foot front yard setback, meets side yard setbacks and the rear yard setbacks. It is just at the maximum FAR, so the FAR comes out to 0.40. That is including the 500 and some odd square foot garage, as well as 99 feet of vaulted ceiling space, because we count any space over seven feet ceiling height twice. So on the first floor, bit hard to see here, you can zoom in. The applicants have a floor plan that includes several several living areas. There's a great room in the front, a family room in the back, an open floor plan kitchen and dining room, office, an office, one bedroom, and then another media room in the rear, as well as one and a half baths. You can also see here a bit more closely how the courtyard design contains the rear patio area, which does have an outdoor kitchen and dining area. And the applicants have indicated a part of the reason to pursue this design was to have some mutual privacy in their outdoor entertaining space. At the second floor, there's a primary bedroom suite and two smaller bathrooms, each with their own, two smaller bedrooms, each with their own full bath. And then a little kind of reading lounge area at the landing at the top of the stairway. Previously, there was a proposed small second-story balcony patio here that the applicants removed at the request of the neighbors at 60 Diane who had concerns about privacy issues. And so here we have the front and rear elevations. The design is quite different than a lot of the designs that we've seen. The architect has described this as a transitional design, which staff agrees with. It does have some it's a contemporary design that includes some more traditional detailing like gabled roofs. It does have a, quite a obscure, I would say, entryway. There's a large privacy wall here just at the entryway. What you can't appreciate in this elevation is that this has cedar slats which go over the window to the lower level media room. So this does open it up a little bit, but again, does kind of create the sense of, a bit of a sense of not the most open welcoming entryway here. In this elevation, you can also see the proposed fence, and this is the fence that would go along the side and rear property lines. The applicants have intentionally limited the glazing on both side elevations for the neighbors. There have been ongoing conversations with the neighbors. Neighbors have had concerns about privacy and window openings, so they have minimized the window openings and where there are window openings, they often have higher sill heights to mitigate those, those concerns. At the rear, there's quite a bit of glazing, however, this is all facing back to the rear property line where it is bordering on the creek and then also at the high school property and wouldn't have any privacy effects. Negative adverse privacy effect. And here there's some better details of the side elevations. Here you can see this is the side elevation facing 60 Diane. They have eliminated all of the second story glazing. And the same is true for the second story side elevation. That's facing the, the south. There's no second story glazing. The materials are neutral contemporary materials. Notably, there is a metal roof on this home. That would be the only metal roof. Metal roofs are, in the neighborhood, metal roofs are known for being very fire resistant and they have quite a longevity. There has been some comments that have been raised by neighbors in the immediate vicinity of maybe concerns that that might not be in character with the neighborhood. So it would be the first metal roof approved in the neighborhood. Staff doesn't have any particular concerns about that, but just bringing it up for your consideration. The heritage trees proposed to be removed are two large fir trees in the rear. As you saw in the staff report, these are growing on a mound which has within it a rusted car that was abandoned some time ago. It appears to be a car maybe from the 50s or 60s. It certainly can't stay there. It's quite dangerous. In order to remove the cars, the trees also have to come down. The applicants provided an arborist report that verified that there's really no way to get the cars out of there and make the necessary improvements without taking the trees out. There are also seven other non-heritage trees that are going to be removed for the project. Staff has included a condition of approval requiring replacement tree of the two fir trees. And that's something that the applicant can work, work with staff on leading up to the building permit application. Four heritage trees are included in the tree protection plan, including the redwood to the south and three trees that are located just on the other side of the fence on 60 Diane. There's not a lot of grading proposed in the area, but they are rebuilding a fence that's in disrepair along both of those property lines. So we want to make sure that the trees are all managed well and the applicants are dedicated to that. Going back to the fence, this is a good neighbor fence. Currently, there is an eight-foot tall fence, it's seven, an eight-foot tall fence along the 56 Diane and 60 Diane property line. The property owners of 68 Diane asked that that fence be rebuilt as part of the application. And for congruency, they'd like to carry on the same style of fence on all the side property lines and the rear property line. Staff has made findings to support the heritage tree removal permit request and the fence height exception request. While this project does meet many of the objective standards, all of the objective standards in the R1 code as far as FAR, lot coverage, maximum height and setbacks. We do have some concerns regarding the subjective findings for design review. Those are largely related to the lack of consistency in the organization of openings. On the front elevation, there's just a lot of different sizes of windows and different angles in the roof form. Having the two separate gables that are connected by this hallway at the top. And because of that, there's some concern that the front elevation is just a bit displeasing from the street view and may not fit in with the existing pattern of development in Heather Gardens. Even as we're seeing new development come through, we haven't seen a design quite like this. This is the most contemporary design that we've seen. The applicants have also chosen to cite the home, the wings of the home right up to the allowed side yard setbacks. This is one of the largest sites in Heather Gardens, and as you know, most of the sites there are much smaller and they're square. This is like a pentagonal shape that fans out. So there is an opportunity, staff feels there's an opportunity to maybe bring these wings in to make bigger side yards that would have maybe some several effects. Larger side yards would allow for additional vegetation and screening to be planted between the two homes, may also help reduce this massive feeling that the home has. While the site is fairly level, there is, it is raises up a bit from Diane, so it does meet the height limits. The floor is being raised because the home is in the FEMA flood zone, so the finished floor has to be raised. There is a potential that the finished floor may be raised even further, as DPW has indicated that they feel that just raising it the minimum may be while it's allowed, they have definitely urged the applicants to consider raising it further, which they could do while still being within the maximum height, but that may add to this massive feeling. There's also quite a bit of hardscape in the front yard. They meet the, I've measured it very, very carefully, and they meet the 50% paving rule for the front yard setback. However, there is quite a lot of hardscape. The paving rule only applies to hardscape that's used for vehicular access. So they have this driveway approach for two cars. But they've also included turnaround that maybe could be removed. And then there's quite a lot of concrete hardscape leading up to the entryway, which could maybe be just reduced in some ways, however the applicant would like to, or maybe making the pathways narrower or thinking about some gravel or some other potentials there. Which leads into the comment about just an feeling of an unwelcome entryway when there's a lot of hardscaping and this kind of closed off entryway, staff feels that that may not be congruent with the pattern of development in the neighborhood, which most of the homes feature a lot of prominent landscaping. We definitely see more open covered porches in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. It's uncommon to see a privacy wall at the front door in this neighborhood. And finally, the, the other outstanding concerns is that the style of this design just comes across as a bit massive and bulky. We do look at massing in bulk as part of design review. Of course, that's something that we're looking at specifically with FAR exceptions, which this project does not need. That I, there are some considerations that could be made to the design that might help with that. And part of that might just be reducing the wings of the home or pulling them in, or just bringing down the floor area overall. Give me just one moment because I want to make sure I get these numbers right. So earlier I had said that this was the largest lot. This is the second largest lot in Heather Gardens. The largest lot is the lot directly adjacent to it to the south at 50 Diane, which is about 960 square feet larger. That home is developed with a 3,200 square foot, single-story residence, so this home would be quite a bit larger than that. So just things to think about when we're looking at bulk and mass. I do want to add that we don't have concerns about privacy or solar access for either of the immediate neighbors. There are some impacts to solar access. They are not significant. The applicants did provide a solar shade study that was reviewed. So we feel that those findings were able to be made. So a recommendation is to hold a public hearing here from the public and the neighbors. I'm available for any questions that she might have. If you have concerns or if you agree with our concerns regarding the design, we recommend continuing this application to a date certain and directing the, a date uncertain and directing the applicant to make modifications. However, if the planning commission feels that it can be, can be approved and that you can make the findings, staff did provide draft findings for approval. So please, if you have any questions, let me know. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jackie, for your very thorough reports. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
So I was trying to understand the massing and the bulking that, that concerns you. You keep talking about the wings being moved in, but can you see the wings from the front?
So because the home is on a cul-de-sac, you will be able to see them. It's not just a traditional square-shaped lot. I think there's a few factors here that add to it. One of them is that because there's a slight elevation from the street and then this fan-shaped size of lot, you see. So they, they would be somewhat visible.
Because I was thinking maybe the one closer to the, you know, the wing that's by 50 might be visible, but the one by 60, because it seems like it's a straight shut down, so.
Not all of it would be. Yeah, no, certainly not all of it. But the second, the second stories, yes, definitely. And then some of just the top parts of the wings would be visible. But the second story is more the issue here. I think we're discussing the feeling of bulk and mass from the streetscape.
And then my other, more of a. And then my other more of a comment is I noticed that they, you know, they've got a fire hydrant right at the corner between fifty and fifty six, right? So to me, it makes sense that they would have more off-street parking because there's going to be limits to where they, you know, how much they can park on the street right there, right? Because of the fire hydrant. So.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point.
Okay. You mentioned a metal roof. Wait, can you, can you just show me what, is it all the roofs metal or is it just one portion of it?
The entire roof is metal.
Oh, I see.
So I think this helps. You can, you can see here, there's this eyebrow that comes out from above the garage.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
All, all of the roof is metal.
Got it. Okay.
The wing on the north side by sixty? The flats, because that doesn't look like metal. Oh, I'll let the architect answer that.
Okay, maybe, maybe it's a question for the architect then.
There were some changes to the design at one point. They had included a living roof and they had made changes as there's concerns about the upkeep of a living roof and how a living roof is nice when it's planted, but how do you ensure that it stays alive and things like that? So during one of the neighborhood meetings, which I did attend, they held a, a meeting with some of the immediate neighbors and they just discussed the design and the neighbors discussed some of their concerns and things came up. One of the things that came up was the living room. So they did make a change. So I'll let them speak to that.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any more questions for staff or we can listen to the? Okay, so we'd like to invite the applicant or the architect to come up. And, and maybe you could address a little bit about why you've gone with this winged approach and the, the wall at the front. I think some of us, I'm assuming that we'll all have questions on that. So great. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Ah, that helps. Thank you.
Heather, would you like me to pull up your presentation with your elevations?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think it's on. Yeah. All right.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Heather Foy with Bright Architecture. I'm the architect for fifty six Diane Lane, this design. If you can change the slide, Jackie, that'd be great. This is an overview of the existing site, which Jackie touched on well. You can even see the outline of the car underneath those two fir trees that will need to come out. It's one of those fifties boat cars. Next slide, please. This is the streetscape elevation. This is the existing home, which was once very loved as we understand, but has now fallen into disrepair. Next slide, please. The proposed aerial view, and this is getting a bit washed out, but you can see the courtyard shape that we've proposed is actually a purposeful privacy move on our part to minimize the windows on the outside facing the neighbors and really just confine those to what's needed for egress and light. We've, we are going to frost all of the windows on each side. And in concern for privacy for the neighbor on the fifty Diane side, the south, we're raising those, we have raised those windows to six feet off the floor. So and it's at the head height of the average person and frosted those. So we feel that there's not a privacy concern there, even though we are at the side setbacks. We feel that the owners of this lot will entertain and utilize windows from that center space. And it will minimize, you know, when people are next door going, oh, oh, hey, I can see your party. And so we actually think it's a benefit to the neighbors and the owners of this lot. We do have a unique lot. And so we've taken advantage of that to, to create this shape for that reason. If we were to centralize things closer into the lot, we'd have to include more windows and doors facing the side than we have now for egress and light. Next slide, please. We have done a significant amount of communication with the neighbors in the planning department and we've made significant changes through those conversations, including things you've heard from Jackie already. But another thing we did is previously we had the whole second story aligned with the sixty Diane Lane side. And in consideration for the neighbors on that side, per their, their feedback, we pulled that mass back to closer to the front, but still set back from the lower floor plan in order to keep that stepping from the front and, and locate that mass so that it didn't overshadow rear yards. So that was an intentional move. This upper story, while it appears that it is wings and it is technically a little V shape, it's really quite contained on the second level. So it's not like there's massive wings going back. And that was in conversation with the neighbors in the planning department to create that. We also previously had green roofs, as Jackie mentioned, between the lower level wall face and the upper level. And we got feedback, you know, that how do you know that's going to be maintained? Yes, those are let go sometimes. And we replace those with sloping roofs that are quite modest and I think create a nice massing, stepping and articulation to the structure. We also pulled in the structure from each side on the second story in order to step from both the front and the sides. So while we are at the side setbacks on the lower level, we are not on the upper level. We also are proposing a fence height exception and that's at a specific request of the neighbors to create privacy. As Jackie mentioned, we are, you know, subject to raising the floor above the FEMA flood elevation, which is a difficult balance, as you can imagine, trying to keep our height limits, which we are under. You know, we're not just under it. We have some space as is. Even with raising the floor level, which it comes to about three feet higher than what it was. And as Jackie mentioned, the engineers are saying, yeah, why not raise it a little higher? And it's like, well, because we're balancing all of these things, right? And we did remove, remove a roof deck in conversation with the neighbor, sixty Diane, for privacy concerns. If you can go to the. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Materials. Yes, we understand that this has modern detailing. It is at its core a traditional shape. And it's, it's in slightly modernized clothing is how we see that. It's a transitional structure. It is, you know, based on the findings report. I think staff noted this, that it's actually in context with the commercial district here. While there aren't examples exactly of this in Heather Gardens, it's not like this is, you know, from the moon. This is a detailing that we will see throughout Marin. And next slide, please. You can see the stepping on the elevations here from the front specifically. This is a fairly unreal elevational view. You know, because elevations are so rigid up and down, you don't see that context of the wing going back. So this is actually, it's a big lot, but it's quite narrow at the entryway. And where we're situated on the lot is consistent with where the neighbors are situated, front to back and rear to rear. As far as just the band of structures, if you look at the aerial view. And so we've obviously are compliant with front setbacks. And then we, what you see from the front is actually quite narrow. So on the left side, the sixty Diane side, you're correct, Commissioner Hall, that it goes straight back. So it's similar to most any other rectangular lot where you will see the wall tapering in perspective. On the right side, the south side, it is angled with the lot. So it's still tapering back visually in perspective, but it's at an angle. That, those portions, the wings are single story. And the left-hand side wing, the sixty Diane side to the northwest is a flat roof to keep the roof as low as possible. The fifty Diane side on the south is a gable roof, which we felt was nicely aesthetically pleasing as it is more visible from the front. Next slide, please.
I just opened your side elevations, but I feel like you were just talking about.
Yeah, side elevation. So you can see our scale figures. That's a six foot guy or, or woman. Right up at the, the underside of those windows, those will be frosted. We have not noted that in the plan because that, that was from a conversation that we had with the neighbor after we submitted these. But we will, we will frost those windows. Also, so there is a height differential from the neighboring property to this floor level. So we did, you know, do some studies of view angles. The neighbor, even if these were not frosted, would be looking up at the ceiling in these spaces and not see people or activity in there other than lights and ceiling. But we are intending to frost them. So we feel that there's no privacy issue there. Can you go to the next slide? This is just a synopsis of the design features that we see as a part of this setback from the front and the sides. The courtyard footprint, we actually do believe creates privacy. The second story, as you can see, is aligned to the front. That's the second story. So that gable you see beyond, yeah, that point. Thank you, Jackie. That gable you see beyond, that is single story towards the rear. Transitional design, keeping that gable form, which is, which is, we believe in, in alignment with the neighborhood. And then the neutral tones and natural siding, we think that these softer materials, particularly the stained wood, which there are a lot of examples of stained shingles in the neighborhood. Will, will give a natural, nice subtle feel to the siding. Next slide, please. And these are solar studies. So this is the worst case scenario when the sun angle is the lowest and you get the most shadow, specifically towards sixty Diane. This is sunrise on the lower portion with the existing on the left and the proposed on the right. So you can see at sunrise, you're getting some pretty extreme shadows from each structure. And because we have structure in the middle here, ours is a little bit more continuous than the existing shadow. However, that dissipates by noon. And while it does still create shadow at noon, it's not touching the roof line of the neighboring structure at all. It's, it's on the side yard. And then in the evening is, is a non-issue. And then the next slide is June twenty first, which has a much less severe sun angle. I mean, in the mornings, you'll get lots of shadows onto the street, but those will dissipate fairly quickly. And then the sun is almost directly above at noon, which is just true universally in the summer. And then in the afternoon, you do get longer, longer shadows towards the south side. But we believe that the impact is minimal for that shading. Next slide. And I'll wrap it up. This is just our landscape plan. I think Jackie spoke about the lack of planting on the sides and that a lot of the neighbors do have lots of greenery all around. I think we're in a different time here. We have to design for fire. And so we have a fire protection zone that's required. And even if we were to bring in the wings, we would be allowed to have only certain planting in that side, which I don't think would be significant privacy in terms of height of what we're allowed. I mean, we may be allowed to have some minimal things, but we're, we're subject to a new standard here. So we have low drought resistant planting, which we think is going to be quite beautiful. The paving in the front yard, the turnaround is an amenity for safety, which we think is nice. I mean, I've parked on that street. It's, it's quiet, but busy at times. So we think it will be nice to have these, these folks be able to pull out nose first. And sure, we can talk about reducing the paving accessing the front door, but we actually feel that that's a welcoming feature. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the architect?
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
I was just wondering if you could comment on the, the privacy wall at the, at the entryway?
Yeah, I mean, we see this as a feature that can showcase their address. Are you talking about? So this is the privacy wall, to be clear. This is just a slat siding on the building. So it's a partial height wall. Yeah, that's a better view of that. The steps are still quite welcoming directly up onto the covered porch. It just creates an interesting, yeah, slightly private entry because we are planning to have a glass door behind that.
And, and that has slats in it or it's just a solid concrete wall?
That's a board form concrete wall. The slats are on the wall behind the scale figures there.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Oh, that's fine. I also, I guess I just was wondering some clarification on the sort of different floor elevations between the garage and the, the main house, what, you know, you can kind of see it in this image here.
Yeah.
Is that due to the FEMA regulations and the garage does not need to be raised to the same standard? Okay.
So we're trying to keep, obviously you have to get into the garage, right?
Right. Yes.
And keeping it as low and low profile as we can.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I just wanted to, to confirm. And then the last thing sort of that I had a question on for you is the window sizes in the front yard. That was one of Jackie's comments is that they are, sorry, not in the front yard, but like the front face of the house. You know, we've got a few different window shapes there. And when I was driving around, I noticed that most of the other houses in the area have like sort of consistent or symmetrical windows or window patterns. And so I was just curious if there was, what the, what the reasoning was behind that.
I mean, creating interest.
Okay.
It's an aesthetic.
Okay. Any more questions? I have a question. You have, I know you're putting the metal roof on. Are you going to put solar panels on there? And how does that work with a metal roof? Can you do that?
You can. We haven't designed the solar system, but with every new structure, you do need a solar system. So yes.
No, but like for, for solar paneling, you can still put that on with.
You can. And we haven't designed our layout. They may possibly go on the flat roof in the rear, but we'll, we'll see what the best exposure is.
Okay. And then just a clarification on the fence, because I know you're asking for a fence height exception. You're saying that right now there's an eight foot fence on one side. And as, and the neighbors asked you to keep that fence in place. So now you want to have an eight foot fence all along the back of the three sides of the rear of the property. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
To clarify, we're not necessarily, we don't need an eight foot fence on the rear. Both neighbors have asked for matching fences, which we think would make sense.
Matching to?
So the request came from the neighbor at sixty Diane to match the existing height. And the neighbor of fifty Diane would also like the same height fence possible.
And what is that then? Oh, that's seven foot?
It's seven feet with a one foot lattice, so a total of eight feet.
Okay. Okay.
I had one more that I thought of, that I wrote down on a different paper. So on the, the two single story wings, I think you may have touched on it, but one of them has a gable roof and one of them has a flat roof. I guess is that, you mentioned it was just because you could sort of see the gable roof more from the street. And so it was just.
Yeah, and the flat roof is a, yeah, the flat roof is a specific consideration for the neighbor at sixty Diane.
Sure.
At their request. Or at our discussion with them.
Yeah. And I suppose you won't see, really see the flat roof from the, the street. It just looks sort of odd when you're looking at it from some of these perspective views that one of them's flat and one of them's gabled.
Right. If you have a drone, you will see that. Right, if you have a drone, you will see that, but otherwise, no.
Okay.
So I I'm more concerned about the the front view of the house, and do you mind putting up? One of the diagrams, maybe a clever closer up Dega, that's a good one. So the the privacy wall, the concrete wall, I understand, and you want to put that in there because you want to put a glass door behind. But have you considered instead of like a flat concrete wall, something that's got more. Maybe more welcoming, I to use, I guess, staff's words.
We could consider that, yeah. This is the first feedback we've had on the wall.
This is the first feedback, okay. And I've seen something similar where they've put kind of bars that are wide.
Slats.
Yeah, but not not like the thin slats that seem to be popular right now, like much wider. And then with the top of the the second story. And and again, I I shouldn't really, maybe I'm jumping ahead a little bit here. Again, if did you consider. Insetting it more, maybe not making it so sheer, like. Blocky, but like having it more inset.
Do you, do you mean the center portion?
No, I actually mean the edges. Um, and I'm and I'm not, I'm not an architect and I always butchered a description here and I miss blocked me on the the commission tonight.
And I, you know, by the way, we did meet with neighbors on site, including Brock, walked the site, got their.
Good, good.
Do you mean the the lack of overhang on the?
No, so on, if you look on the the where the garage is, is that, is that a, does that just go straight up? Is that one wall that goes straight up? Or does it?
No, it steps both from the front and from the back, and I think if we go to the three D views, which. Are on a few slides.
Oh, here we go, you know. Or just slightly, right? Maybe it's not as bad.
Yeah, there we go. So you can see here.
Oh, here it is.
From the side and from the back, both on both sides.
Just wondered if they could do something with this. I see. Okay, that's helpful. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Tamara, did you have any questions? Uh, no. Okay. Um, is the owner also planning to speak?
I don't think to speak necessarily, but he's here.
Hello. Uh, okay. In that case, I think, thank you very much. Think we can open it up to public comment if there's anyone here tonight. Yeah, and if you could introduce yourselves and.
Hi, my name is Frank Greco. I'm at sixty Diane Lane, which is to the left of this property. Uh, I first want to start off by saying. That the architect and the owner have been great. They've been very, they communicated with us. They've they've been concerned about our needs. So they've been great with that in mind. Just a little bit about me, I was born and raised in Larkspur and I'm back in Larkspur, so I've been here basically fifty two years. And my parents still live in Larkspur. My one frustration with Larkspur is the character is changing. Right? I see modern houses, don't like it. That's my personal preference. I'm very old school soul and I like the the old school feel of Larkspur. When we see modern houses come up. It's all about the dollar and it's all about making money and just turning and flipping. So just for my purpose, I don't like to see that type. I like to see a traditional house, okay? Also, um, I'm an electrical contractor and I've been on many, many, many jobs. And I can tell you right now, MMWD will raise it more than three feet for the flood lane. It's guaranteed. They've done it for every job I've done and it's been maxed by two more feet. So with that in mind, on, well, it's not up there, but on the left side with the flat roof, it's going to raise another two feet. Right? I have the Great Wall of China in my backyard. Okay? Also, with that in mind, they're gonna put solar panels. When, if you do solar panels, I'm surprised they're not in this this line of questioning, like, just like they haven't. Got any kind of sketch with the solar panels, but if they do put it on the flat roof, that's gonna add probably another ten inches. To a foot, it with the with the maybe ten inches uh for the solar panels. Um, if they put on there, so those are also an eyesore. So like I said, they've been great. And I really appreciate, you know, the communication they have. And I've also, they've done a lot where they gotten rid of the deck, great, because it looked straight down in my backyard. They've uh had a flat roof, that's great, but it's still gonna be five feet up. And then nine foot ceilings and then so floor and ceiling, it's gonna be up there. And like I said, it goes past my back of my house eighteen more feet into my backyard. Once again, I, they've been great and you guys are are asking about the front yard. I don't think this should be your concern about the privacy wall. I think that shouldn't even be brought up. It's aesthetics. It's just the look of it. Your main concern should be the bulk of the house. You have a big piece of property, but your main concern should be, does it fall in the character of Larkspur and Heather Gardens? That should be your concern, not the landscape, not the pavers, not the little privacy wall, not what frosted door they have. Or how big their windows are in front. I don't think that that does anything. I think your current concern should be, does it fit the neighborhood? Does it fit Larkspur? And. Do you have the best interests of everybody that lives in that neighborhood?
Great, thank you very much. Can, what was your name again? Sorry, I missed it.
Frank Greco.
Frank Greco. Any other comments? Okay.
I'm Judy Smith and I live at fifty Diane Lane, which is on the other side. And I agree, they have been very, they've been working with us and they've been very helpful. But my problem with it is it's right on the property line. And like Frank says, it's pretty massive. I I hadn't known that it would come up higher. I don't understand why it can't go in some and have a little landscaping along the side. So I'm not looking, because that side of the house is open on my side. That's where my driveway is. That goes all the way to the back. I'm just gonna be looking at a wall and windows. I don't understand, and and I asked them. What I was told was if they move it in, they have to add windows. I don't get that. What difference does it make? It just seems like it's right on the property line. It will be visible from the street because of the angle and my driveway there. And it's gonna feel really massive, whereas if it were moved in, it can be softened. That's my concern.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for working with us.
I I think to answer your question, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, is it, it, what I heard in the presentation from the architect. Is it if they centrally place the property? Right now, it seems like they have windows on the on the inside of the two sides, so they can get light from the inside. But if they take the two wings, and and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I'm just describing, this is the way I understand it. If they take the two wings and they put them together, so it's in the center of the property, they lose access to light from the inside. So they have to bring it from the outside. It's on the edges, so you're suggesting that they bring it in, not centrally place it, but just make it a the smaller. I I guess entertaining space or whatever in the middle, right?
So, yeah, so it's really, it's just really close and I'm looking.
Right. All right, thank you for your comment. Thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Um, hi, my name is Mandy Downing. I'm at sixty four Diane Lane. And um, my comments are that, you know, I don't, I I'm not familiar with this process. This is my first go around, so I'm not sure how much time. Um, it sounds like staff has spent a lot of time considering the neighborhood. Um, but the planning commission spends, you know, actually considering the structure in the neighborhood. And as Frank said, you know, Heather Gardens has a very certain character and aesthetic. And this project could not be more in contrast to the character of our neighborhood. It it could not, and I think the architect mentioned it's kind of in line with some commercial buildings. We are not a commercial zone. And so I cannot emphasize enough how much of a standout and an eyesore this would be to our neighborhood. And so I don't know how, you know, the other things that you've mentioned that are kind of more about the details of it. The massive consideration should be the impact to the neighborhood with a project as contemporary and massive as this, because it does not fit. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? Thank you.
I'm Denise Pep. I live at forty six Diane Lane. Um, so I have a somewhat contemporary house on the street, um, but it is not contemporary like this. I think this is too massive. And it would be an eyesore, frankly. It's a beautiful design somewhere else. I'm not knocking the design. It would be an eyesore for Heather Gardens. It doesn't fit with our look. Like Mandy said. It would be really out of character of our neighborhood and more in line with, you know, maybe it would be downtown somewhere else. It doesn't fit with what we're doing. I I do think we should consider the concrete wall. I think that's really not welcoming. I think we have a warm, welcoming feel in Heather Gardens. And I think have a regular door and don't have a concrete wall. I don't think you need to have a concrete wall. It feels, it feels really cold. And they're not building it to move into it, so it, you know, they're building it for spec and they're just gonna flip it, so. You're not building it because you need this privacy. So that just doesn't feel right. I also just want to know if there's gonna be a sidewalk. Is that in the plans?
That would be a question for staff, no.
Because I was forced to make a sidewalk when I remodeled my house and they said, as everyone in Heather Gardens remodels. Eventually, there will be sidewalk in the entire neighborhood, so I have this stupid sidewalk in front of my house.
Oh, that's interesting.
Okay, I mean, anyway, I think, yeah, everyone should have.
For that, that's actually interesting for me to hear, so, um, thank you. Any more comments?
I think if, as long as you were commenting as a private citizen.
Yeah, that's my understanding, but you need to do it from there.
Please don't approach the bench.
Yes. Very threatening.
He's done an amazing job of dealing with people. It's, I know, it's not an easy job. So I've lived in Heather.
You might want to talk into the microphone. You're not used to.
And also, I'm Brock Wagstaff. I live at sixty six Diane Lane. And I'm an architect and I've probably done, I don't know how many houses in Heather Gardens, but so I'm pretty familiar with it. Uh, and we've lived there, my wife and I, for forty five years. It was my starter house. So I've been very aware of neighborhoods changing and Heather Gardens has changed too. And. And I happen to like modern architecture. But I have to say that this house. Isn't neighborhood friendly. It just doesn't feel friendly. And I I don't know whether that's because it's a for sale house and. You know, you want to have your privacy, but um it would be nice if the house related to the neighborhood. And I'm I'm not adverse to modern housing. I think it, I think it really is nice, and I think this is pretty close, actually. And, you know, if if I were doing it and I wasn't gonna bother Frank too much. I'd make a peep proof on that flat roof, because I think it will be less intrusive view in a way than the than the big flat square. Line across there, but anyway. So. I'm I'm hoping that the architect can can, assuming the commission says that. Can find a way to soften the house a little bit. And uh, remember that Heather Gardens really is, it's it's a real neighborhood. And uh, we all kind of know each other and. We'd like to know the people that move in there and not have a concrete wall at the entry. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. You're the owner, right? Yeah. And maybe you could also address the, if you're buying it to live in it or buying it to sell it as well.
Hi, uh, my name is Ari Caneely and I'm the owner of the property. Yeah, I, you know, I I I appreciate everybody showing up here and the concerns and trying to get this thing built, this house. Yeah, I'm I'm a builder and this house will be for sale. I I live in San Francisco and. So. We've done a, I was so lucky to have Heather and Megan working for me, because um, as everyone said here, it tested to that the outreach has been great. And we have really tried to, you know, to 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 meet people and find out what's. What the concerns are and try and adjust the concerns. Yeah, there's tweaks, obviously. We can hear what people are saying, right? Whether it be the concrete wall in front. You know, soften it some, we can do that, you know. It's hard to to uh get an idea what people want. We've had outreach meetings and two, three neighbors showed up, Frank. Um, Brock and Judy. Other neighbors showed up here tonight, were invited to the outreach to to listen to our comments and their concerns. But they weren't, they didn't find the time to get to that hearing. Or to to the meeting and so we could discuss that and maybe try and negate these issues that they have. But tonight with the commission, they stand up here and it's the first time we've seen these people, so. You know, we are trying to work to get a project that people want to see in the neighborhood. It's gonna get built, what, there's something gonna get built there, right? We're gonna, we're we're gonna, we're gonna go back and we're gonna, you know, try and soften it some. You know, this idea that Frank has, that this building is gonna get two foot taller from the flood plain by Sika, I don't know where that's coming from. Maybe somebody here could tell me in Larkspur on the flood zone is that typical that they may adjust it. There's not a standard of three foot, that they may go to five feet. I don't understand that. Definitely, um, the location of the of the solar system, that's definitely up for discussion of where that's gonna be. It hadn't been considered yet. So, um, yeah, I'd appreciate. People getting involved, give us the concerns and we'll. Try and deliver a project that that people are somewhat happy with. We're not gonna please everyone here. You know, as Brock said, Heather's Gardens is changing and it's going to keep changing, you know? And architecture is changing, what people want is changing. So it's not always gonna stay as Heather Gardens, the way you remember it and the way it is today, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments in the room? Anything on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's bring it back to the commission. Um, it's only the three of us. Commissioner Hall.
I I hear what the neighbors are saying, that it does seem too big. It is, it is a nice big lot, which we don't have come before us very often. Um, so I was very excited when I saw how big the house was gonna be. I was like, ooh, this is great. The design does not. Bother me, the modernness, the the privacy wall. I figure that's a good place to hide the the Amazon packages behind it. It's a house I would, I would probably like. The wings, for me personally, the wing that goes towards fifty, you know, it looks like it angles a little bit. Not real fan of that. The flat roof, I think, I think started out because there was a deck there that got removed. I'm more, I think I agree with what Brock's comment that, you know, maybe a gabled roof there. I'm I'm, I hate flat roofs, that's just a personal thing. I don't know that for Mr. Greco that we're gonna be able to have it look like old Larkspur. I think Larkspur is changing throughout, um, so it's finding that balance. So, you know, finding, finding something that, you know, fits better maybe with the neighborhood. the neighborhood. I think the modern design isn't horrible, but maybe it's just, you know, a little bit smaller in the front. I don't know about the, I, I don't have an issue with the wings being on the setback, but um, I'm not the one who has to live next door to it. So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to say, you know, yea or nay on those, but, um, certainly I think you've gotten a lot of good feedback today. You know, unfortunately for people who didn't show up before tonight. Um, so look forward to seeing what you come back with.
Um, I guess I want to start by saying thanks for everybody who came out today. This is, uh, local government at work. So thank you for coming out and making your opinions known. I also want to say thanks to, it sounds like the architect and the project team for doing some, some good outreach. Sometimes, sometimes we have people come in with problems that could have been avoided with that. So it sounds like, some of those things you were able to head off before coming here tonight. In terms of the sort of the modern design and some of the comments about it, it doesn't fit and why are you focused on some of these details? I think sometimes the devil's in the details and some of these things I think can make a, a structure feel welcoming or unwelcoming or, um, harsh or softer. Um, and so I think that's, that is sort of part of our job here is to try and consider those as best we can. I also think that, I mean, I don't really have a problem with sort of the, the modern design. We see houses that are, that are more modern throughout Larkspur. Um, so, and, and I think that sort of, it's, it's okay to have something that's, that's a little bit different. You know, we, we don't, we don't want us to specify sort of a cookie cutter house. Um, because people's tastes are different and you should be able to build what you want on, on your property. I, I, so getting into some of the details, I, I don't really like the, the, the privacy wall. I think you could probably accomplish something similar, um, with like a frosted door or a regular door and not have it, the house feel sort of walled off. I'm also not quite sure about the, like, the turnaround. It seems like that's just adding pavement. I don't think any other lots in Heather Gardens have, uh, a turnaround. I, I, I parked my car there and walked around this weekend and I don't think any other cars passed me. Um, so I really don't think turning, backing out or backing into the driveway is really a very valid concern. Um, that's, that's my experience today and other days in Heather Gardens. And I also think that sort of the front of the house could be, could be softened a little bit. I, it, uh, this design, it's, it's a little bit more modern, which, um, some folks may like, but it also doesn't have the benefit of some of the, um, sort of what I think, I'm not an architect either, but sort of the softening features of, of the other houses in the area, sort of like, like eaves that make it feel a little bit recessed or, um, you know, even, even, uh, more pronounced like trim at the edges, um, the corners of the house that break it up. So I think that doing, putting some work into softening it and, um, I understand that the window sizes was an intentional choice. To me, it looks a little bit odd to have, you know, a bigger window and then a square window. So maybe that can be incorporated into softening it. When, it sounds like we are thinking about continuing this item. I think having the solar system shown on the next set of plans would be helpful. So we can see what that might look like. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I actually agree with a lot of what Commissioner Campbell just said. Um, so I won't make this too long. I, um, I do want to add though, that I do really appreciate that a project has come in that's in compliance with most of the codes. I mean, that's quite refreshing. We have so many requests for step back exceptions and FAR exceptions. So that was, we do appreciate that. Um, so a lot of this is borderline subjective. And I, and I want to say that. And I really do, um, applaud the architect for creating something that's quite cutting edge and very unique. And in some ways it is quite stunning and quite beautiful. It's not going to be to everyone's taste. And it does surprise me if you're doing this for sale, that you're doing something that's so vastly different. Um, I'm not sure who you're appealing to coming into Marin, but, um, so I, I, I kind of went back and forth on the two wings. My initial response was like, wow, they're very close to the edge and that would be quite towering, but it's from the street. Um, it's not as visible as, as Tamara had mentioned at the beginning. Um, but it would, but it's, and it's, and I'm glad that you're already working with the neighbors that, and, and in fact, on the comment about the neighbors, um, it sounds like everyone has said the same thing, that you've reached out and you've done a good job with that. But the three main neighbors that you met with, who also came here tonight, still had very strong opinions. So I'm not quite sure where the disconnect happened because you're clearly talking to them and listening to them, but they still have quite loud concerns. So maybe there's some further discussions there. And I do also appreciate you can't please everybody. So we're hearing everything that was said tonight. So just in some detailed responses, um, I personally would work more on the front and trying to soften it. I just think it's, personally, I feel it's a little out of character when you look at it, um, from the front. And if you can work on that design. Personally, I don't like the concrete wall and we talked about some alternatives to that. I think plantings are lovely. But I love the fact that you also had a page in your, in your architect report that talked about fire safety. And that is, so I don't have such a strong opinion about what the landscape is going to look like, I think. Especially with what's happening down in LA, we need to think about fire safety and put that sort of front and center. What else did I have on here? Um, yeah, if you're going to put solar panels on this, then do include it in the design if you're planning to include that. I think that was it. I think you got some good feedback from staff as well. So please work with them. I think the next time you come in, we'll hopefully have four of us on the bench, which will make it a little bit, um, I think easier for us to, to, to kind of finalize this project as well. So.
Do we want to talk about the trees? I don't have an issue with the heritage trees being removed, the ones they're growing out of the car.
I didn't either.
Yeah, the tree, I, I guess, no, I don't want to jump.
Yeah, no.
So for the, yeah, if they're growing through a car.
And the fence height, I didn't have an issue with the fence height either.
Makes sense. Didn't, I, I actually have a question for, for staff. Didn't we, uh, didn't we make a new ordinance or alter the, the code for the fence height exception if the neighbors agreed?
Uh, we did, but as this is coming forward with a larger design review application, it, it has to be included in the application and considered by.
Okay. So if that was independent, that wouldn't.
That wouldn't have come before us.
Um, if staff had, if they had, if they had applied independently and staff was able to make the findings to approve, we would, notice everyone in the radius that we would intend to approve it, subject to a protest period. So.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Yeah. So I'm hoping that we're clear in that the, 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 the design needs, the modern design needs work.
Right.
Okay.
I unfortunately don't think we're going to get out of, I mean, a one story building. Even if it's, you know, if due to the, it seems like a lot of this is due to the, you know, raising the house higher than the neighbors. And that's, I guess, sort of an unfortunate reality of living and building in a, in a flood zone is that it's hard to get around that.
As a commission, do we have any clear guidance on the wings?
I personally, I think I'm okay with, with the wings because they're complying with the setback rules that, um, other houses in the area are also subjected to. I don't think, I don't, I guess I don't see a reason to, uh, mandate an increased setback for this property compared to, to other properties.
Yeah, okay.
I would agree with that.
Great.
As you mentioned, it's like it meets so much of the code.
It does, which is refreshing. Okay. So I think, do we just make a motion to continue? Is that how that works? Yeah. Okay. I would like, one if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to continue, um, project PLN twenty four dash fifteen to a date uncertain.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
And Chair Chalmers.
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes, three yeses, zero nos, one absence and one recusal.
And I will add this, do we, there's no ten day notice to appeal for this now? I don't think you can, there's no need to appeal a continuance, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Uh, uh, to continue, no. They found a decision. It's just if, if they were making a decision to approve or to deny today.
Yes, when something's continued to a date uncertain, the notice happens again when it's, when it comes forward.
Right. Thank you. All right. If, if we can invite, um, Brock back up and we can move on to the next project. All right. If we could ask everyone to sit down so we can move on to the next, um, item, please. Which is one Redwood, uh, PLN twenty four ten. If we could please have the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Let's get this settled here. Okay. So, uh, good evening commissioners. The item before you is a study session for a PLN twenty four ten, which is, uh, one Redwood Avenue. Uh, the commission may remember hearing this item. I believe it was the first meeting in August of twenty twenty four. Uh, and as a bit of a refresher, uh, the project was heard, you took public comment and you provided feedback to the applicant before voting to continue it. And some of the feedback centered around reducing the size of the residence, retaining the existing oak tree on site, uh, reducing the visual bulk and mass of the residence and specifically lowering plate heights around, around the structure. Uh, so just on that, on those notes, the home as designed currently has been reduced, and the design before you, I should say, has been reduced, I think approximately five hundred square feet. The oak tree has been retained. However, uh, I will come back to that later, put a little mental asterisk next to that for me. Uh, and they have lowered the plate heights in both levels. Uh, so it was a bit of a refresher. You can see the, the overhead location on the left and the Google street view on the right. Okay. And so now the home proposed, or the project proposes to demolish the existing residence and construct a new thirty five hundred and sixty two square foot two-story residence with an attached ADU. Uh, as designed currently, it would require approval of designer view, a floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit and a variance. So here is the site plan and it's sort of hard to see on the overhead. You might be able to see it better on the, on the screen, but there are some kind of, uh, reddish highlighted areas where the, the footprint, footprint, excuse me, has been shrunk. Uh, you can also see that the garage has been pushed closer to Redwood Avenue than in the previous design here. And the oak tree is currently proposed for retention in this design. And you can see that the drip line of the tree here is this larger circle on the site plan. So here are the proposed floor plans, uh, similar to the last design. It's a two-bedroom residence with an attached two-bedroom ADU and a two-car garage. Because the garage has been pushed, uh, towards the street to preserve the oak tree, there are no guest spaces. Uh, so that is one of the, there's two variances required for, one for the garage setback and one for the parking. And here are the revised elevations. Uh, you can sort of see this dashed line here. That is the outline of the old structure. Uh, and you can kind of tell where it's been reduced in size. And then here are the side elevations again, where you can see the outline of how the home has been reduced in size. Okay, so the, uh, project does still require a floor area ratio exception. They are proposing a point, zero point four two FAR, which would be the, uh, eighth largest FAR in the surrounding three hundred foot radius. Uh, and I will note, um, that does include the square footage of the ADU. There are some spaces that are exempted. There's a storage space that's, uh, still subgrade at the rear of the lower level. So, uh, getting back to the heritage tree, your feedback to the applicant was to explore designs to retain the heritage tree. They have done that and returned to you with something that could keep the tree. I sent this to the city arborist to review and his feedback was essentially that he's sort of revised his opinion from a few years ago when he looked at it, that any sort of construction is going to have a major impact to that tree and there are signs of failing health. So he believes that it is best to have the tree removed, uh, and re, and require replants elsewhere. I asked him if he thought there was any design that would be feasible to keep that tree. And he said, no, he thinks it should just come out and be replanted. Uh, this project still requires a slope use permit because it requires approximately just under five hundred cubic yards of grading to complete. And as I mentioned, it does require a setback variance for the garage and a variance to reduce the required guest parking. Uh, now because of the city arborist's opinion on the tree, staff's recommendation, as noted in the staff report, would be to push the garage back to the original location where it's more attached to the home, which would allow for the four required parking spaces and we may remove the need for the setback variance, or it might go back to the, the original proposal, which I think was only four or five feet into the setback, if, if memory serves. As designed, the, the garage is just under two feet from the property line where the required setback is twenty feet. So you have received several public comments from neighbors. I think there's been seven sent in. Uh, and similar to the last design, they are generally opposed to the size and scale of the residence, as well as the setback and the parking variances. So staff recommends that you hold a study session, take public comment and provide the applicant with specific feedback on the proposed design. The applicant will return at a later meeting for a formal decision, which will be noticed for everyone in the area again. Um, and so with that, that concludes my report. I know that the architect and the owner are here and the architect does have a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Uh, do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay. Um, can we have the presentation from the architect?
Well, we're back. Again, I'm Kenneth Holder with Holder Parlette, Architecture and Landscape. And, uh, I really do want to say thank you for creating this format. I hadn't seen this before using a, creating a, a less formal sort of, uh, review because the reason it's partly relevant is this is an extremely tricky lot. This is one of the tougher ones I've ever worked on. And the last hearing, uh, I, I can't say that we got necessarily the most constructive feedback. Yes, we heard that the house was too large, very clear. There maybe wasn't enough public interaction. We felt like there was, but we didn't realize that there would be such a strong, uh, response. So, uh, so that was definitely, I guess, a lot of applicant teams go through that. And so since then, we've had a meeting. Uh, we've had a neighbor meeting, which was definitely very helpful and definitely better to get direct. and definitely better to get direct, uh, interaction with neighbors here it. But also we got a chance to talk about what it has been like getting to this point. It is a, it has been a really particularly arduous uh, project. And, uh, you know, maybe you can go to, um, just go to the site plan, the proposed site plan. Oh, actually, this, thank you. Yeah, this is the one I, right, right, right.
Do you want to, you go to?
No, this is great. This is actually perfect because this actually was, yeah, go to the next, to the next page. It's a little bit blurry on this screen, but what it basic right here would be terrific. This is sort of three pages of records of just working with the very city staff to get to a schematic plan that worked. And, uh, when we first came in, um, the feedback was try to maintain the tree, see if you can put the parking on. There's an existing, uh, ledge. And, uh, yeah, yeah, it worked with that. Uh, the initial feedback we got placing driveway, keeping the tree in place, creating off-street parking and guest parking put us at a very steep and perhaps unbuildable turn. It was gonna have to require really a multi-point turn into a garage that would allow this sort of configuration and they retain the tree. So, um, and actually building below the existing tree, we ended up with building sections like that where the tree was eight to seven to eight, nine feet above the interior floor elevation of the house itself. This was not, and our arborist had said quite clearly, we didn't, he didn't think that there was a way to retain the tree. Unfortunately, we were working with an arborist report that said retain the tree. So we've spent a lot of time trying to, trying to figure out how to keep it intact. And in, in the end, none of us could feel good about this kind of a configuration. Build a house almost completely under the, the tree line. Can you have the next page? Sorry if I get a little heated because this has been challenging. So here is basically the sixty-two foot diameter uh, drip line of that tree. Uh, yeah, this is an overlap of our arborist and some of the city's arborists, Kent Julein, who, uh, talked about critical root zone. Uh, what were the different terms? Protection zone. Most of the house ended up in that, in the true, uh, the, the root zone. We were really confused by the, the arborist report that came back and said retain the tree. And that was what the city council, I, I mean, the planning commission asked for us in the last round was retain the tree. So we, uh, well, and then it's even worth looking at the next page because this then looks at some of the fire department feedback that said the, almost the entire house was in what was considered to be, what was it called? The, uh, forgetting the terminology, but a basically a no build zone. You're not supposed to build under large canopies of trees, but so the, the extension beyond the drip line, which is ten feet, left us with almost, you know, really a pretty negative place, uh, placement for the tree. I mean, for the house itself, but, but so here's another building section where there's the driveway that of course that later the city said it wasn't really a great, wasn't going to be an approved configuration, but we ended up having to place a retaining wall to try to hold that hillside up while building the garage below it. Since then, the new arborist, I don't know if you have a copy of the arborist letter, but it basically says retaining the tree is not a feasible option. So unfortunately, this, the scheme that you're looking at was our desperate attempt to try to retain the tree at all costs and build a driveway that would be approved and try to reduce the fire over, uh, the fire risk. At lack of, uh, uh, of, of, of other options, we ended up saying, hopefully not cynically, we just said, all right, we will pull the garage out to the street, just like our next door neighbor has. We will create a detached garage where, and then shrink the house by five hundred square feet, bring the roof down three feet. We thought we were on track. We were, however, since then, the neighborhood feedback has been still pretty negative. Now, it was very helpful to be able to show folks this documentation of what we've been through. I think people softened a little bit and said, what we heard from that, perhaps the most important was retain parking. Do not create a situation that takes away any parking spaces. So by association, the presence of an ADU had a very negative association. And also asking for a parking variance was going to be, really, that, that was going to be quite controversial. So unfortunately, what we've proposed and what you're looking at, uh, I mean, I guess is part of a normal dialogue. But, uh, we would, you know, what after this last, uh, after the neighbor, uh, meeting, what we heard is folks were starting to get that maybe maintaining the tree was not possible. Provide at least four parking spaces for this, get rid of the ADU and reduce the square foot further. So that's where we are right now. So what we've actually done is taken that, taken a realistic look again, and it's probably worth going to the next page. So it's actually probably worth looking at this for a second. Fortunately, folks were quite complimentary on the design. I think Commissioner Swisher said, said it really aptly. He said, great design, wrong site. So we've now softened this, made it more organic, hopefully more site appropriate. Um, we're proposing three oak trees uh, along the street edge to soften the, to screen the tree, uh, the, the, uh, the house more adequately. It's worth, while I'm right here, is pointing to, there's three cedar trees that are on the street that, um, I think most people would agree is probably not desirable in a biomass fire situation. Unfortunately, those three trees, to remove them, they're on city property, it would destabilize a large mass of of, uh, soil right there. And it, I think what our initial discussions with the city like two years ago was a large retaining wall would have to be implemented in there. And the question is, whose responsibility is that? So we left it in, we left the trees, but I think that understandably, in light of recent events, folks are looking suspiciously at the, at those three cedar trees. So that's, I'm really putting that aside as something, it's the design itself doesn't, isn't dependent on that, but uh, while we're here, it's worth looking at. Uh, so if you can go to the next page. Oh, then this is the full set, uh, full set of drawings after this.
This is.
Yeah, let's see, um. Well, can you go to the very last page? This is what I, I think it's. There we go. In order to not drag this out, I know that folks will probably want to get up and talk about it's still too large. Uh, so what we did after the, after the neighbor meeting, we redesigned the house. We basically took out the ADU. Uh, and condensed the house, reduced a lot of the square footage, reassessed everything again. So it's, so now this design, oh, I can't see it. I actually took out another five hundred square feet by eliminating the, some of the inefficiency, the ADD of the ADU. If you can go to the, the previous page, actually. This is the main living level. I guess it's really hard that it's the exposure in here, but maybe you can see the dash area. Now the house and almost every plane has come in or on an average of three feet. Some places, master bedroom suite up there is coming in almost, let's say, I think it's five and a half feet. So the entire house has been shrunk pretty considerably more, um. I was gonna say, I don't, actually, I don't know the percentage, but you can, I guess on your printed copies, you can see how we really condensed every single space, uh, to make it more palatable. The resulting here is actually, can you read that on your screen? I, unfortunately, I don't, do you, I don't know if you'll have, we only finished this maybe a few hours ago, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Didn't get it.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused. I, I, it's the plan that you're presenting not what we're looking at. Okay. Right, that makes more sense.
As Alex said so clearly, the entire status of the oak tree, that design is based on retaining the oak tree.
Right.
So we redesigned it after Sunday night's meeting.
Got it. Okay, so you, that was my next question is, when did you meet with the neighbors?
It was, uh, Sunday.
Just this Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we started trying about a month ago, but due to the holidays, it kind of kept getting prolonged. So, but it was, I think it was very valuable. Folks who've been living there for a long time, I think, really impressed to say, look, there's an existing character to this neighborhood. We've gone through a lot of negative experiences with people coming in and massing out the houses and do them, doing them as specs. And so they, that point was really made clear. I guess I would like to direct your attention to the intent of where we are really is a design that's, this design, the last two pages I've shown you are really a response to the neighbors having much more direct and constructive criticism. And so we listened to that. So if you'd like, we can go back to looking at the assumptions about keeping the oak tree. Uh, but I don't think anyone's gonna.
I have a quick question for you, just so I'm, just so I'm clear. Um, so the, the latest design is how, how many square feet? Three thousand?
This one here is under three thousand. It's twenty-nine hundred minus, it's, it's twenty-nine forty-six. Then downstairs, you can go down.
There's some. Yeah, I'll, I can read the table for you if you'd like. Yeah, but there's a downstairs storage area that's exempted. That's a hundred and seventy-four square feet. So the final floor area would be twenty-seven seventy-two.
Talking about the new design?
This design, yes.
Is your question you're asking, asking us right now is, should you talk to that or should you talk to this?
And I probably should have asked that before. I just don't want to waste anyone's time talking about.
So I think your question is, we, we, we don't talk to this plan and we can put it away. I think that was his question and we don't. So are we all in agreement that we're okay with the tree being removed? So it sounds like you're going to push the garage back.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
The feedback was so unanimously strong about you know, about the parking, it basically made this, that scheme that was submitted weeks ago no longer as relevant. There's no way I could honestly propose that.
Well, before we just go move into the next step, let me just make sure we're all on the same page up here. Um, I think it's going to be a little bit tricky because we've got nothing to look at on paper, but that's, but are we all okay?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to approve, uh, something.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, that's right. It's just.
It's just a discussion.
One, one quick question though. Is it now technically, uh, more square footage? In other words, the ADU subtracted six hundred and. So to be clear on that, the ADU was included in the square footage of, of the design that's before you, so it would have been subtracted from that.
Taken ADU out, but, but the thing to understand is they can put the ADU in back anytime, right? I mean, right? So they could approve the property.
No, but my, what, what is obvious in the numbers here that we're looking at is that I, I, I really, I love the idea ADUs. I hate this business of subtracting numbers out of square footage because it's still a big building and you're saying there's no ADU now.
Yes, the feedback was so strongly against what an ADU might present to more adults perhaps living there with cars.
Yeah.
That we thought it wasn't even a tenable solution anymore. And there's no longer, we're, as a new construction, we're not, not allowed to deduct the ADU from the FAR. So that's why we're at forty percent. Maybe you can.
Yeah, there was a, I think the first time you heard this, uh, it was being deducted. There was an interpretation change that you heard from the city attorney. So currently it does not, the, the square footage of an AD was not exempted if it's a part of a new build. If they, if the home existed and they were going to build a detached one, that would, they would get a bonus to the floor area. Okay.
Um, but sort of Mr. Holder can continue. What, are we all okay with the tree no longer being there? So he can present the plan?
I am, yeah. I'm okay with the tree being there.
We really tried. We really did.
We appreciate that. And we also appreciate there was a turnaround on this. Um, though this letter came out in the beginning of December, so you've had some time to consider it, right? So.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, but we didn't quite, the way Alex summarized it was definitely more conclusive than I necessarily, I, I, I heard it as retaining as in retaining walls, but I, you made that, but you've talked to him more personally and got a sense that retaining in terms of keeping the tree. And that was a distinction I didn't get.
Oh, I, maybe we miscommunicated at the counter. I was, I don't think I ever meant to speak to a retaining wall.
Okay, I thought what was, well, and then of course he made the point that any kind of construction within that critical root zone would probably endanger the entire tree. That was not clear. So we went through a hearing before where everyone said, keep the tree. That was like unanimous almost. And so now it's almost completely the opposite.
So do you want to talk, walk us through your current plan? And am I correct in assuming that any neighbors here tonight have not seen this plan?
Yes, it's, and that's, this is really an.
Okay, so this is.
There's no way anyone would have seen it. We just.
Okay, well, well, this is a study session. This is a opportunity now for the commission to give feedback and we can hear public comment tonight too. Yes, so you can come up and make a comment based, but I would base it on the current plan that you're going to hear tonight. Okay?
And the interest of time and, and speaking to the neighbor meeting, I guess I was somewhat at a disadvantage because I was dependent only on the emails that I had gotten from staff. So not, I don't know that, and then we added some names selectively, but not everyone apparently got invitations. Right, and I have a feeling we'll have a chance to do another neighbor meeting probably.
Let's see your presentation. Thank you.
Well, um, and in many ways, or
I know.
Because this has already been seen, there's not necessarily, uh, any mysteries, but you know, this site has always been contentious because, partly because the site has been sitting largely like a park for a very long time that.
Can I interrupt you for one minute? I apologize. Is there any way we can get that television out here so we can see? Because
It doesn't have a very long.
It's, it's really too.
Yeah.
We should all just walk over. Wait, for me, I think one of the biggest questions is, is the garage now back to being more off? You now are going to have the four parking spaces. I think that was a big one. So you won't have a parking variance when you come back?
There would be no parking variance. We would expect to provide all four.
All right. So please continue. This is much better. I can see. Yes, I can see.
And for everyone else, I'll speak more slowly and more descriptively here to walk people through who maybe can't see that.
Open it. Don't do that.
But what we did do.
Yeah, that's better.
This, and this was done quite hastily. I mean, Sunday night, I didn't have a lot of time to get this ready for the hearing, but it seemed quite clear and there was still quite a bit of strong comment from uh, neighbors. So we said, let's get motivated and see if we can redesign this and really make a substantial change, get it in under three thousand square feet. Uh, so that became our target, but the first thing that had to happen is we did move the garage back. The, the approximate location of the existing tree is right about there. Uh, so the, how the garage went back to being an attached garage rather than detached. This is the lower level, but you're actually walking up a few steps to the front door. So this is very similar to the previous design, an entry courtyard, stairs going up to the main living level. Unfortunately, at this point, still somewhat, I don't know, something was long hallway to get to two veteran units here. We changed it to a single bath, no longer en suite baths there. Uh, part of why, where this massing started from was that it actually occupies nearly the exact footprint of the existing structure that's on the property. So that motivated a lot of decisions, not the least of which there would be a giant hole to fill, uh, given that the inside of the house has been excavated down in a terrifying level. It's like many, many feet below existing floor levels, part of, uh, the previous owner's attempt to, uh, to, to remodel it. So the really strongly, we feel like this is, uh, massing the two veterans downstairs here made sense. There's a partial, uh, there's a, uh, storage utility, maybe laundry that would be largely fifty percent below grade, so therefore exempt from FAR. But then you go back upstairs, maybe you can go down one page. Uh, so you come up to the, uh, to the main living level. You got open to below with the entry. The garage is still shown. There's that, the, uh, the existing tree. Uh, the main living space, we shrunk again, uh, quite considerably now. I mean, I think, as I said, it's about, it's an average of three to five feet of reduction on, on all of these sort of upper areas and especially around the master suite. That has been condensed in quite a few, I mean, in every direction. So the result is the square footage now has dropped by like over a thousand square feet. So, um, so I, I feel like we're within striking distance of what folks had really asked for. Uh, whether we could continue to lower the house anymore, I don't, we looked at that again. I don't know that that's going to be possible. Maybe the master suite, we could, this is all. Maybe the master suite, we could, this is all, it has one roof plane over the main floor and the master, uh, suite area. Maybe we could break that roof plane. And we would like to make the point, there was a decision to make this a, a flat roof was largely driven by the attempt to reduce the mass to the apparent mass for the neighbor uphill. Uh, because that's the, really the closest neighbor to the house. So we stayed with the flat roof, even though it's going to be more maintenance, truth, truthfully. So, um, so that kind of drove some of the decisions, uh, about that. And we've greatly shrunk this, uh, uphill, uh, garden patio up here. I think, you know, and that these three feet have come out and we brought the fire. Uh, there's an outdoor fire pit, uh, that is part of a retaining wall there. That's been brought down. Uh, we've shrunk this, uh, there's a, uh, deck over living space, this patio here. This, I think we've taken out another two feet, uh, six inches on, on the two sides. So there's hardly anything that's, that has left, has, uh, remained untouched. Um, there's, there's really been a diligent effort to try to bring this into something that's more palatable. If like Alex said, if you deduct for the living, for the, um, utility space downstairs, this comes in around twenty eight hundred square feet. So, uh, the compliments, there were compliments architecturally about the house itself that we tried very hard to make it feel like it had sort of a deference for the beautiful sight. Um, we, uh, yeah, we feel quite strongly about this design. I didn't give Jeff and Leanne a chance to talk. I don't know if, if, if they would like to say something. I would like to, however, can I add one more supplement here? Um, I look at the, uh, this, the FAR. If you place it as an overlay. And I'm not this, I don't think this leaves you at a disadvantage. Not saying it's basically, I, I just took the FAR table. Oh yeah, I guess. And this overlay over the surrounding areas, just to kind of get a benchmark of what is expected. What is, what are the typical surrounding lots? What are the FAR, uh, numbers? And generally there, you know, it starts at forty, thirty six, thirty nine, fifty eight, fifty five, uh, thirty six, forty. And then of course Gary and Kathy at ten percent. Um, I feel like, uh, this, this design brings us to around thirty five percent FAR. Still needs a, an exception, but I think we're well within the context of what this neighbor has, uh, existing. So, um, this has been a couple of years of work to get to this point. So, but I look forward to hearing your com, your comments.
Thank you. And can I just ask a question? So what, where did we end up on the, the, the cypress trees at the bottom? What's happening with those?
Well, that sounds like it's going to have to be a position from the city. Uh, I don't know how these are handled. Uh, when the trees all exist on, in the right of way, completely within the right of way, typically it's a little unclear. I mean, of course, the homeowner is seen as, uh, liable, I guess, or it has to maintain the tree. But they, the, the town said, the city has, uh, the town set, has said basically retain, keep, keep the trees in place.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, any questions to the architect?
Um, I guess I'm an engineer. So the first thing that jumped out when you said that the trees might go and they're sort of holding up the slope is, is the house going to be designed as if those trees would eventually be removed? I mean, maybe it's a question for your geotechnical engineer, but like, do those foundations need to go a little deeper? Um, to sort of prepare for that eventuality that those trees would be removed.
But you did, you did say right now they're staying there, but I think Commissioner Campbell is saying at some point in the future they may go. So can you, can you address that today?
Well, yeah, when you, when you remove a tree, you start changing compaction levels of soil. Uh, that would obviously have to be carefully supervised with our geotech and I guess even with the arborists themselves, that maybe even the city arborist. Because the root structure might actually extend under where the existing house or the new house is being proposed. Uh, you know, I, I'd have to give that some thought. I don't have an overly developed, uh, response on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, maybe it doesn't require a response, but that's maybe something to, it's not, not really our role, I think, to, uh, look at the engineering parts of this. That's up to your professional engineers.
What I imagine would happen, uh, is we could approach Department of Public Works and get their point of view on this. Uh, and, and see what, you know, see if any of that, the removal of the tree, the position has updated. And maybe it's a shared responsibility, but it was pretty intimidating to hear the city was going to say, we could take it out, but you have to be responsible for retaining wall in its place. Uh, that was pretty overwhelming, yeah.
And you, uh, you haven't probably gotten to structural, so you don't know whether you're doing drilled piers or uh, helical piers or.
It's, uh, it was going to be drilled piers. Uh, Craig Herzog had set up pretty strong.
If it's drilled piers, they can, you can just look at it when you're drilling and it'll be.
Right. So it really, I don't think it would be an issue.
Any more questions for the architect? Okay, thank you. Um, can we go to public comment now? All right, do we have any comments on the public this evening? If you could come, thank you, if you come up and introduce yourself.
First of all, I would like to, uh, thank the, uh, Kenneth and Grayhan for, uh, having the meeting on Sunday night.
Do you mind talking into the microphone?
Well, I'm Bob Powell.
Thank you.
Twenty one Redwood, uh, my wife, my wife, Dallas, D O N Y S. And, um, so we're, we're two houses up from them. Um, but, uh, I came away from that meeting with, it was very useful, uh, very informative. And I got the impression from that meeting that we could, we, and speaking for us and maybe the neighbors could work very cooperatively with, uh, with Grayhan. We did want, um, my wife and I for sure, and I think other, other neighbors really wanted to see that ADU, uh, removed because of its effect on the parking situation. Parking situation, it's a steep hill, it's blind turn, turn, there's really no parking, uh, on, on the weekends, there's wet hikers. Uh, this property has actually been used as a parking lot during the time, uh, during the time they owned the property and took over. And so those cars that, that that those cars were, were there and now they're on the street. And for the ADU to be there, that looked like it added a number of cars. It just wouldn't, it wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't be acceptable. So I'm glad to see, um, that there has been a redesign. We haven't been able to see it yet and look at it or any renderings to see what it looks like. Uh, to see, uh, there's any, you know, the main issue of course looking is, is the, uh, the tree. And in order to satisfy the ADU removal and the parking requirements, uh, and within those constraints, um, we are aware that the tree is going to be an issue and it may not be able to be saved. And we know that, um, you know, maybe there's a health, uh, problem with the tree, uh, root structure issues, uh, fire with the, with the tree, uh, over the, over the roof. Uh, it could affect the insurability, uh, of, of the, uh, of, of the property. So we know that's an issue and we haven't been able to look at this. And, but we're going to have to come to terms with the tree issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the trees along the, um, the lower end of the property, um, I don't know that we have any strong, any feelings about that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, you can come up and make your comment. So I just went, thank you. No, I just would like one comment at a time, so thank you. Yeah, oh.
Hard to understand sometimes with, with the public address.
All right, well, thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. Thank you. Would you like to come up and? Yes? No, it, I mean, it might be easier for, for everyone to hear. The, the meeting's also recorded, so it gets picked up with the microphone. Thank you so much.
I'm at three twenty eight and I'm Susan Imperial.
Thank you.
I was here at the last meeting on August twelfth, I believe. Um, I was just saying that they're not cypress trees, but they're cedar trees.
Oh, thank you.
No, no problem there. Um, and some of these things were addressed in regards to the ADU. I was happy to hear that. Um, I didn't know about the meeting and a couple of my neighbors don't know either, so we didn't hear about it. Um, I think a lot of the things have been addressed, so I'm happy with that. And that's all I wanted.
Super, thank you very much. Uh, any, any more comments? Yes, thank you.
I'm Claudia Cohen and I live across the street and it sounds like you've addressed everything that we've been worried about. The AD, look, parking is really critical. But personally, I'm looking forward to having a good looking house across the street.
That's true.
It's a nice looking house.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Any comments on Zoom?
Uh, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we do have one. Oh, can you let him speak on that laptop? I don't have the permissions. Uh, Andy, we're going to let you have permission to speak here in just a second. Okay, you should be able to unmute and provide a comment.
Yeah, hi. So I'm Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I live next door at eleven Redwood. So yeah, this is the first that we're seeing the new design. So it does address a lot of our concerns for sure. My, my one big question though is coming out of last meeting, it was pretty obvious that everyone wanted, uh, the tree to be saved as, as the, the designs that you have in front of you showed. Um, the arborist at that time had said that the tree was healthy, could be saved. What I'm curious about is why the one eighty? What happened to, to have the arbers all of a sudden say that it's now not okay? Um, and you're making your decision on this new design just kind of off the bat, you know, automatically saying, okay, the tree can be removed now because you have this one new arborist report. So my question would be, uh, potentially, is there an independent arborist that, that could potentially provide another report to see if that's truly the case? Um, and, and that's basically it. I'm, you, you, because he, he just came in and just decided that all of a sudden the tree was getting removed without any discussion about that. So the, the, the new designs definitely addresses a lot of the concerns, so that's great. But you're basically getting off of, off of a premise that's, you know, was just kind of just offhandedly given to you guys to say, okay, the tree now, now needs to go.
Right, thank you for your question. Um, I'm going to have staff weigh in on this too, but just to try and address some of that, my, the, this, uh, Arbor Science who said that the tree would probably not survive the construction is not the arborist for the applicant to see. It's a city arborist, right? So technically it would be a, an independent arborist.
Yeah.
Right, right. And it sounds like it's, it's based on the up, it sounds like it was based on two things. Um, one is the, the, I guess the change in, in, in the arborist's report from originally saying that the, the tree was healthy and could be saved to now saying not enough, a time has passed and the, the condition of the tree has deteriorated and could not survive. And two is the feedback from the neighbors that parking was really important. Um, and by trying to save the tree, the, there was, parking was basically pushed off the property onto the, onto the street. Am I correct in, in describing that?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, do you have anything to add to, to answer the question?
I, I mean, I can't speak to the thought process of, of the arborist. I think when he reviewed it, the report that was provided at the, the previous meeting where you heard that, you know, that was based on a site visit. I think in twenty twenty one, so it, it could be that there's been some extra material changes to the tree in, in that timeframe as well. Um, but I think just looking at a, at a plan where it's proposed to be, I, I can't, I think looking at a plan where it was proposed to be retained, um, probably just he decided was not feasible.
Great, thank you. Is that all our comments?
Uh, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to provide another comment, please raise your hand. Yeah, there are no other, other comments.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment before we close the?
I'm thirty nine years and I live across the street, uh, three Tori Madron Avenue, but my driveway goes to there. Uh, my question is, um, is related to any house, uh, where the lot is, uh, all the deer and coyotes and all, they go from one side to the canyon, from the, the mountain they go there and then I guess they will go into the canyon. If they have a totally fenced house, no area for wild animals to pass, they will need to go Redwood down and, you know, it's a very busy street, cars really speed up. Is there anything that someone can do when they build, you know, uh, to think about the wild, uh, life or not?
And I addressed that to staff.
It's a very, no, deer, coyotes, it's really, is there a highway they pass? They pass actually next to where the tree is.
But there's a, in your report, you talked about a, a paper road.
Yeah, there's still going to be a strip of natural land. I think it's called Bel Riv Place that's technically, um, what is that, west of the, the rear property line? So there will still be a, a natural path to cross behind the property. It's a public right of way that wouldn't be able to be fenced off. Um, so there would still be a, a corridor for wildlife, but.
From, um, so the property is here on Redwood Avenue. So they cross from, they come from that side down and they go into their property. And I guess then they will go to the canyon.
I think if they find a building in the way, they're going to change direction and, and, and turn left or right.
Understand, but if they go down Redwood Avenue, there will be a disaster with cars
Yeah.
killing all the animals.
Right, but, um, can, can the applicant, can you, could you just confirm that, that there is that, um, on the plan that we, that was here, there's a, there's like an opening. Yeah, exactly. That's not being built on, right?
No, that, there was an effort to actually obtain that, but it's, uh, uh, currently held in trust by a whole, a group of descendants of the original owners. Uh, I can't imagine it would, and it now it's only, it's going to be, I think, between fourteen and seventeen feet wide. Obviously, really nothing could ever be built there. Uh, I know that in other municipalities, when this question comes up, there's always the question of fence lines. It's really, I think, is a, is you, you, you have to, we all allow fair use. You're going to build a house, but in some municipalities, they make certain distinctions about how much fencing would be allowed. I don't think there's any fencing, uh, proposed as part of this project at all. Unfortunately, there has to be some sort of coexistence. So I think the idea of, yes, there will probably be animals crossing, uh, across Redwood, uh, and, but I don't know that this house necessarily creates any undue constraint. There's no, there's no fence line proposed, so they could choose where they, where they cross. Uh, so.
Thank you. And, and if you can just stay up, I actually have one additional, if you could. I'm sort of playing devil's advocate here and I just want to know that, let's say you, you, you finalized the design, you get your approval based on what you've provided or something similar to what you've provided. Because as we understand it, you're going to come back with formal plans
Yes.
to request approval. And let's say at a later date, you came back and asked for an ADU. Where would you put the ADU on this property?
You know, that's an interesting point because another project in our office, of course, has been here and that, I think it might've been you who, who, or maybe Ali's actually, uh, uh, brought this up. Uh, in this particular case, I don't know how you could, because the two bedrooms down. In this particular case, I don't know how you could, because the two bedrooms downstairs pretty much become a block for that. I don't see any way that you, you could add it, the, I mean, there's still setbacks required, and we're, we're, we're within the setbacks, back from the setbacks. But any addition onto would put it encroaching over those setbacks, and I think that would basically make it, I mean, the quantitative requirements for an A D U are pretty strict. If you get within four feet of a property line, it's pretty hard to add anything else.
Okay. And I'm really asking that question for the benefit of the neighbors, because I understand you've removed the A D U, and the way the current climate is, is people can put ADUs in, so I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page, that they understand the rules around that. But what I'm hearing from you is that there really wouldn't be a way to put an A D U in unless you came back to the commission to, to request changes.
It would be interesting to know more about that process, because, uh, because, right, how, if, if you have a design review, approved design review, you have the entitlements. What if you had to modify what was within the design review to, to alter the house? That's gets into some very, uh, some very sketchy area. I don't know anything about.
Maybe Alex is gonna, uh, address this, but I believe you can put an A D U in without, uh, park, without increasing the parking. That's,
Yeah.
that's the whole, been the whole puzzle with ADUs and.
Right.
And I really, what I'm getting at here is if you're going to have another meeting with the neighbors.
Yes.
I would just highly encourage the owners and yourself to just be open about what your future plans are, because I understand the A D U's been removed and it's made, it's resolved a lot of issues here.
Right.
But as we've seen with a lot of developments, ADU's come in after the fact, so.
It's, of course, the city is, uh, the town is going through its own mat- maturation process around what does an A D U mean, and we were, I will say, probably encouraged to include the A D U in the scope of work. There were a lot of reasons to include it. Oh, we had, you, you get an offset in square footage, you got different F A R, uh, different setback requirements. So we actually developed that into the expectations. Really, Jeff and Leanne are, they have adult children who, uh, having two guest bedrooms downstairs, it would actually be better to have it attached as one house.
Great. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, one more comment.
My name's Brian Perry. I live at sixteen Redwood Avenue, um, directly across from the proposed development. I did wanna just a- address the issue of the tree. I, I, I wanna advocate for the tree because it's in very good health. It's, it's, uh, it's been protected against the sudden oak death, which is ravaging the, the canyon and, and all the oaks, um, in the, the whole area of this area of California. It's a very healthy tree. It did have a limb that, that the tree broke off. Um, but otherwise, the tree is very healthy. I know that there's, uh, one of the arborist reports said that the excavation for the parking area had disturbed the roots of the tree. Another arborist report said that no such thing had happened because the cut in the bank is older than the tree, and the tree had grown without any roots being exposed on that bank, and, and there are no roots exposed on that bank. So I just wanted to address that. Um, the tree's very healthy. It, it, there's no, there's no other reason to, as, as far as health-wise, to remove the tree. I know that having a tree within ten feet of a, a structure is, is as, as far as fire is concerned, not great, but, I mean, if you look at the area, it really wouldn't make that much difference. Uh, I know that there is difficulties with building around this tree. It's, it's, it's in a not a good place for building a house there. But I think the arborist report, I, I wanna say this correctly. Um, I think there were some errors in the arborist report in, in looking at the health of the tree. I believe one of the arborists, um, did a drive-by and, and based some of what they said, um, from another arborist report, because some of the stuff in the arborist's report just is not true. So I, I just wanna speak to the tree, um, and that, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and thank you for reducing the bulk of the building. It's, it's, uh, it's much better. I think it's, it addresses a lot of the concerns, and it's, um, it's good to see more parking available.
Great. Thank you very much. Any more comments? Okay, we can close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Now that we have you back, would you like to go first, Commissioner?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I will. Um, I, I think they made a lot of progress, but, you know, the last speaker, um, it is dependent on, you know, if the tree isn't removed, it makes it much more difficult. It was, it's, we've been dancing around that tree for a long time. And, uh, I guess I, I, I tend to believe the arborist's report. And I don't know what, what else you can do. I mean, we can give feedback, but the feedback doesn't mean anything if that tree stays in, so. There you are.
Design?
No, I think where he's going with the design is, is where I would, I'm, I'm happy it's going there, because it was a sort of a mishmash, and, and to be honest, the A D U looked like it was gonna be part of the house anyway, but, um, that seems like a lot of A D Us to me. So anyway.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Sure. Um, well, I, I, I tend to defer to, oh, okay, so in, in, in this case, we have a letter from uh, an arborist that the city has hired. Your, your tax dollars, my tax dollars, um, have paid for this person to prepare a professional, their professional opinion on this tree, and and that professional opinion is that, that they don't think that it can be saved. So I, you know, I tend to defer. I'm not an arborist. I tended to defer to the professionals, and especially weight given to professionals that we, the public, hire as, as an independent arbiter of, um, what's, what is the case? Um, so it, I would not have, based on this new information, I, I think, um, I, I would be okay with removing the tree. In terms of the, of the house, the design, um, obviously, if you, you know, can take out the tree, you can change some, it, it does change how, how things lay out. For the A D U, I did, I agree with Brock. It did sort of seem like the A D U in the previous design was really a part of the house with an extra, uh, kitchen, to satisfy those requirements. I, so I'm, I'm okay with it being incorporated. I guess I would, just so everybody's aware, and it, I guess it doesn't sound like there's another place to put an A D U. But, I mean, the rules are that if you can find a place to put it, the state says that you should be able to build an A D U without coming before the commission, and the floor area rules do not apply. So I guess just wanted to make sure that that's clear. In this case, I mean, it seems like that's a part of the house. The, the size of the house overall has been reduced, so, um, I think it's probably a little bit more, uh, maybe honest as to the intended use of the house. But I, yeah, I, I guess I agree. I think the design is going the right way. It sounds like you got some good feedback from your neighbors. Yeah, that's what I have to say.
Commissioner Hall?
I just wanted to point out on the arborist report, um, that the one that we have from November of twenty-four, December third, twenty-four, is the same person who issued the report in twenty-one. So
He changed his mind, yeah.
I think that that's a key thing to recognize. It's not a new arborist. It's the same arborist looked at it in twenty-one, and now he looked at it in twenty-four. So we relied on him earlier last year on his twenty-one report.
Yeah.
We can't now say, oh, well, we're not gonna rely, he's no longer, you know, good enough for his report in twenty-four. So, um, I just think that that's a, a key point to make. Uh, I agree with the, um, where the design is headed. I liked the design before. It was obviously too big, um, and all the A D U comments I, I agree with. And, uh, I look forward to seeing the next plans.
And I, I would like to add that it's, uh, uh, the previous plan, as you said, was a handsome building, and I'm looking forward to seeing the same.
Yeah, and for myself, um, a lot of the comments I had, I think, were addressed in your redesign with the tree removed. You know, that was a, it was a beautiful tree. I mean, when I went up to see the property today, it's gorgeous, and it is sad that it, it's, would have to be removed, but even if the arborist's report had said it was a, still a healthy tree, I don't know how you can build what you're trying to build without that tree moving away, especially with all the fire danger we have. The only additional comment I have left, and, and I'm, I, I, it sounds like I'm in the minority when I say this, um, so you can take that on board too, is if you're standing on Madrone, on the street side of Madrone, and you're looking up at the property, it, it did occur to me that you're kind of looking at a sheer wall with the two windows at the top, and then you've got that deck. And I don't know if there's any way not to look at that, because that's where most of us go when we're on our way to the Dawn Falls hike or wherever we're going, is that, and that's the view we see from the street, and if there was some way that we could soften that sheer wall, though it's not so bulky, that, I would love that. I'd love to see that.
I'm, I'm glad Natasha brought that up, because that was something I also thought about, was whether you could step it back. Just a couple of feet with some really nice details underneath.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, yeah, you could break out that wall in some way. So that would be my one sort of architectural input. Oh, thank you. Uh, I am not an architect, um, but what else? But other than that, that's it, I think. So I think we don't have to make a motion for this, do we? Because this was just a study session.
They'll return for a formal motion at a later date.
Right. And it sounds like you're speaking with the neighbors. You have some new neighbors that you can be in touch with. And then we just look forward to seeing you when you come back with your formal design. Thank you very much, and thank you for doing this. Uh, we, we do actually appreciate, you know, it does stave a set, and it, and it's very welcoming to have you come in and, and talk to us about this. Thank you. Okay, um, that finishes our public portion of the meeting, and I've lost my agenda. Yes, thank you, I got it. Okay.
That's okay.
So I think for the business items, we have, um, minutes to approve.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we can maybe, uh, push those back to a further, a later date when Jeff's here.
Okay, yeah.
And I think we have to discuss some of the comments that we received.
Yeah, if you.
Yeah. I had, I had some additional changes to the.
Hey, I, I appreciate the conversation in the lab.
In here, whilst the meeting is still continuing, you're welcome to talk outside. I know. Thank you. I was, I'm just trying to keep us moving. Even you, I'm sad it's leaving. Okay. I have some comments on the funds, the, the, the project in, in the last meeting, so I wanted to, I hadn't had a chance to just, I think I'll just email that to you, and then you can incorporate that with the comments from the applicant, and then maybe present that at the next meeting. Can we do that?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So you would like to continue all three sets of minutes?
Unless there's some, does that sound good? Okay, let's just do that. Yeah.
If I could get a motion on a second.
So we'll have four sets of minutes to. I know.
I move to continue all of the unapproved minutes to the next meeting.
Okay, we can get a second.
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Wagstaff.
Uh, sure.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Chair Chalmers.
Hold on. Yeah, okay, yeah, that, I do agree, yes.
I was just thinking if, if there was one set of minutes that we could approve, but we can't because Jeff's not here. And yes, yeah, we're done, okay. Oh, the past, that one, okay. Um, and then, um, are we electing the chair tonight?
Yes.
Even without?
I think Jeff would be a great chair.
I nominate Jeff Swisher to be chair.
He actually is the vice chair right now.
He is the vice chair. He's
to be chair. He's supposed to be chair now. Right?
I don't know if he wants to do it. That's the question. Do you really want him to do it?
I will nominate him. I have nominated, I have actually nominated him.
You have?
Yeah, yeah. Somebody has to second it, though.
Is that me?
I asked him today if he wanted to be chair.
Yeah.
And I got a negative response to that, but maybe if he knows.
Okay, I guess I'll rescind my nomination.
I, I, if you're going to nominate him, I mean, he's technically in line to be chair.
Yeah.
So.
I thought vice chair was supposed to be chair.
Actually been chair.
I know. I, I think we're just, can we defer that to when he's here, so he can actually find it?
Elise, I don't know if you would like to weigh in. I think that you can defer it. Technically supposed to be done in your first meeting of the year, but.
Yeah, there's no problem in deferring it until everyone's present.
I nominate Natasha to be acting chair.
Who is going to be vice chair then?
I nominate Liam.
I, I nominate Liam as well. Exactly. And then when you're chair, it'll be even better on your resume.
You're not, you don't think you can be renewed? Okay, and then, um, planning commissioners reports. Oh, whoops. I, I think we just wanna thank Jackie for all the hard work you've put in. Um, and all the the, all the hard work, the detailed reports, working with all the members of the public that have come in, and for all the things that you've noticed, like the gym, um, definition and the fencing height exception. So those are little things that you've taken and wad, and you've done it, you know, you've taken, taken initiative and made a change for the better. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I mean, it's bittersweet news.
It really is. It, I, I'll cry, so.
How long have you been here?
Um, a little over two and a half years now. I have comments if you could hear me.
We can hear you.
Oh, good. Yeah, let me go to my comments. I've got all kinds of great stuff on Jack.
Oh.
She, she did.
Do you need a tissue?
I've got tons next to me, yeah. Uh, she joined our team two and a half years ago, back in July of twenty twenty-two, and I first had the pleasure of working with her during her time as a consultant for Fourleaf, when I was working in San Anselmo. And from the start, her dedication and talent stood out, and I was glad to hire her here in Larkspur. Jackie was involved in implementing our first online building permit system and worked with Kristen Tyke as her mentor, and she quickly became an expert in all things Larkspur planning. Beyond her professional accomplishments, she's been the heart of the office, the one who keeps things fun and festive with her home baked treats and holiday decorations. And Jackie's genuine interest in others and her knack for making connections have made her a friend to so many of us. I wouldn't be surprised if she knows more about all the city employees and anyone else here. During her time with us, we've seen Jackie experience exciting milestones in her personal life as well. She got married to Hugo. We've watched her daughter Hazel grow, and we've heard her great stories about working at Burning Man and on other projects she's passionate about. On the professional side, over the past two and a half years, Jackie's provided planning comments for over two hundred and sixty resale inspection reports, reviewed more than eighty building permit applications for zoning compliance, worked on thirty-one planning commission projects, seventeen zoning administration pro- projects. worked on thirty one planning commission projects, seventeen zoning administration pro- projects, twenty four heritage tree permits and many administrative projects. Some of the memorable challenging projects include the request to remove the one hundred Drake's Landing Community Center, the Internos Wine Bar, the new residence on a vacant hillside lot at three sixty Villa La Paz, an addition at sixteen Diane, and some code enforcement cases that will remain nameless. She's put a lot of time into legalizing the many, many non-permitted fences at the Larkspur Marina too. Only three of her projects were appealed, which is a testament to her ability to work collaboratively with the applicants and the neighbors alike. Jackie brought forward new regulations for fence height exceptions and fitness centers, assisted with the housing element update and conducted thorough research for the planning commissioner's F A R discussion. She's shown an unwavering passion for protecting Larkspur's wildlife and habitats, whether it's the spotted owls, nesting birds or bats, and she's been a steadfast advocate for preserving our historic structures and keeping the public informed about planning projects. Jackie, your engaging personality, passion for your work and exceptional communication skills have made you an invaluable part of our team. I'm sorry I can't be there in person to say goodbye and I might be responsible for giving you an illness to kick off your first week at St. Helena. My apologies. We will all miss you, but we know you're continuing to do amazing things in your new role. Thanks for everything you've done for Larkspur and for us, and we wish you all the best in this exciting next chapter of your career. Thank you so much, Jackie.
Thank you, Elise.
That was very lovely.
I'm giving you a a hug.
Virtual hug.
From virtual hug.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I hope that I'll find you all on LinkedIn.
Yeah, I hope so, yeah, come back one day.
All right, I guess. When's your last day with us?
Um, today and to tomorrow morning at eight A M. is my first day at St.
Oh, my goodness.
Stay late.
Uh, I chose to, I really wanted to have a another planning commission meeting. I didn't, it didn't feel right to just like leave without saying goodbye. And at fifty six Diane was so close to being ready to come in for their first hearing, so it was important to me, uh, to see that through. Yes, it's really been quite an honor to serve the public here in Larkspur. And, um, this is my first municipal position and I am deeply, deeply grateful for all that I've learned while I've been here and I will take all of those lessons, uh, with me. And, um, I'm really grateful without Larkspur, I wouldn't have the opportunity to advance my career, so thank you very much.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you and good luck.
I just hope that you use the word displeasing in future reports in St. Helena.
I can't entirely take credit for that. My reports are are peer reviewed.
At least.
Oh, come on.
I was like, I saw that and I was like, oh, my goodness, I love this. Just.
But I will be taking that with me, yes, displeasing.
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 Yes, um, I'm going to make him, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Turn.
Right, um, and we can all say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.